We have one hearing, we have one approval of minutes. So I should say the magic words, I call this meeting of the ZBA to order. I am your board chair, Mike Dean. My left is Susan Brown, our vice chair, Celia Fierro, alternate board member. Dan Regan, board member, Bill Finger, Bob Cusick, alternate board member. I thought we switched this away, it's important, but we didn't.
Somebody's coming, there's Madeline.
Madeline, you on?
Yes.
Madeline, we see you in the call, but we see that your microphone is muted.
Okay, okay, sorry, I'm, I'm sorry I'm late, but one of those stupid things that said, oh, you have to update it, and then you updated, and it's like, well, I don't have the right thing, anyway, so here I am.
Okay.
Hi, Madeline. Just reminder, the roll call will be necessary because she's on.
Yep, thank you. So you have us all in attendance, plus our two alternates. And if Rob and I both forget, would you remind us, we need to do a roll call, all right, great.
If you want to take anything out of order, no, we got it, right?
Yeah, we'll, we'll do it. I'm just, uh, the wrong glasses, it's leaving me a little. Nope, I don't have the wrong glasses, I have the wrong. Okay, meeting is called to order, Rob, Taylor, would you like to read our notice?
On up to the shift table here, come on up, so now.
And we'll start first hearing.
Yeah, this is infield land use case Z twenty-five dash zero-two dash zero-one, Bow Mills Brewing LLC. This is Dan with Bow Mills Brewing, has applied for variance relief to infield zoning ordinance, section four oh one dot four, paragraph P, to locate an attached walk-in cooler within the prescribed setback second variance, it's also requested from section four oh eight dot two, signs to allow for additional signage at the rear of the property along Northern Rail Trail, subject properties at fifty-nine Main Street, tax map thirty-one, lot thirty-four, and is two point, sorry, point two-two acres located within this CB community business zoning district.
Mr. Dan, what is your last name?
Thomas.
Dan Thomas.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and just quick little update, you guys remember Brian Degman was before you a few months back, when he was the owner of the building, but Dan was the, was the brewery that was imminent, and they did get a special exception from you at that time for the wholesale component of his business. There was a application at the time for a sign, uh, variance as well. As you recall, we didn't have specifics enough to grant that variance at that time. So now he's come back with more specifics, and he'll make a little presentation for you guys.
So the cooler, so the cooler is completely new.
Yeah.
Yep.
So we're going to hear your request for variance for additional signage, and a separate variance for setback in which you put a cooler outside.
Oh, and I also, yes, we also is, there's a, you'll see in the application packet, there's a request also for a sort of a third variance, it's kind of a, you'll see in your packet, the application for a, what do you call them?
So.
Swap. It's like a.
Yeah, so, so essentially, we want, we want a variance for signage, we want a variance for setback relief on the eastern side of the building where we're going to put our cooler, and then we are asking for a variance for setback relief on the southwest side of the building, where we want to put a, a small prefabbed unit that we intend to use for two different purposes. One, if we decide to grow into food, it'll allow us to have a kitchen, and then second, we want to do like a little rail trail cafe concession type thing, so, um, you know, ice cream, you know, sodas, waters, that kind of thing for, for anybody on the rail trail who might not otherwise come into the brewery, but who's, who's walking by, so those are the three variances that we're asking for.
Do you have a presentation, or would you like us just to read what you've, what you've put into your zoning request?
Um, I, I don't have a specific presentation, I've got notes that I wanted to highlight, but I, I can kind of talk about each of the three variance requests, if you'd like, or, or if you want to.
I would like to hear his explanation, if that's okay.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So go forth and explain.
Awesome, for my sanity, I'd like to take these one at a time, so variance number one, the additional signage. Tell us, tell us where you want to put it, how big it'll be, and why should we allow you to do that?
Awesome, so, um, I'm asking for three signs, thirty-two square feet or under. I would like to have one in the front of the building, one on the rear of the building, and one on the western gable end of the building. The unique footprint of this lot and building, it's a, it's an existing non-conforming legacy railroad property. So the unique location of this building on the lot, we've got pedestrian and vehicle traffic on Main Street, and we have pedestrian traffic and vehicle traffic in the wintertime on the rail trail. So we want people to know where we are, so I'd like to have signage in the, the front and the rear, and I'd like to have signage on the, the western gable end as well. There's some lighting there already installed, kind of in preparation for a sign, so we would like to use that. We don't intend to do anything, you know, that's illuminated or, or offensive, you know, we intend to work with the town to make sure that it's, it's signage that kind of fits the downtown infield vibe. You know, we're looking to fit in, we're not looking to, uh, you know, uh, kind of be the, the exception down there, if you will.
Okay. Which of these signs would violate our ordinance?
So from what I understand, we can have one sign on the building, so depending which, you know, which one I were to pick, if I was only to get one, um, we probably would, would put the front of the building, so it would be the western, uh, end and the southern rail trail facing.
Okay.
Side.
So let's, let's talk about, let's just assume that you're going to fit within the requirements on the front of the building, and you want a variance to put a sign on the western end and on the, on the.
Southern side.
Thank you. Northern side.
I do have it up on the map here, if anybody look for reference, there's the building. And I turned. This is, he's talking about north, south, east, that's two things.
All right, I think I might have my understanding of this map backwards.
This is, this is the parking lot, we call the rail trail parking lot.
Yeah.
Kitchen fifty-six, and the colon block is directly across the street here. So this would be towards.
Okay.
Whitney Hall.
So south is to the rail trail?
Yes, and that's towards the lake on Main Street.
Okay.
So what's the size of the sign requesting, and which size?
So, um, I'm, uh, asking for the ability to do thirty-two square feet per side. You know, we'll, we'll make sure that it, it looks good, so if we scale that down, we, we may choose to do that.
So we'd say thirty-two feet.
Thirty-two square feet.
Correct.
Yeah, just five and a half square.
What's that?
Alternate.
We don't have an, we're not sitting in alternate right now, we have one, two, three, four, five, Madeline's on the.
So you're back to waiting.
No, I don't, I can ask a question.
Yeah, you guys can participate.
You can ask questions and participate in the whole discussion. I have a question.
You didn't last time, because you confused yourself and went out.
Is, and this is a zoning question. Are we talking about, does zoning just talk about free stand signs that are stuck in the ground around the building? Or does it also include signs that are painted on the building, or painted on the will, windows are stuck on the buildings? Am I making any sense?
Yeah, so we do allow, you can have a free standing sign at the roadside, which I don't think he's planning to do, but there is limitations on the amount of signage that could be on the building itself, and that's what he's, that's what he's trying to do.
You can't paint on the window.
Well, so that's been a little bit of a gray area, ever since I've been here, you can put something inside the window that's visible from the side.
But what we're talking about, though, Susan, I'm, I'm pretty sure is permanently affixed to the building, signage, in the traditional sense, yeah.
Well, as an inveterate, long-term user of the rail trail, why do you need one on the eastern end where you can hardly see the gable?
I'm, I'm not asking for one on the eastern end.
He's asking the western end.
Yeah, I know, you asked for one on the gable, the western, I thought you asked for one on the other gable.
This one down.
Just this one.
Here, here, and here. As he said, there, there's some really cool lights already on the building for us on this location.
On the western side and the rear, southern side. So let's not worry about the front of the building faces, uh, Main Street. Let's just take that as, that's your, that you give me.
Got it.
And we'll talk about the western, which faces the parking lot, and the southern, which faces the rail trail. I'm thinking that's roughly four by eight.
Correct.
Okay. I don't have any problem with this. It's just going to be matted flat on the building, so. That is, these tables are three feet by eight feet, so a little bit.
Four by eight.
Right, so a sheet of plywood.
That's a, well, right, but they're awfully big to have on the sides of the building. I mean, this is a little town, we don't need a big sign.
No, we don't need huge signs, but I think those are not big.
See, don't forget, you know, for, if you put it right in front of you right now, four by eight, that seems really big, but you're talking about the side of a building and for something to see far away. Also, also, it might not be four by eight, it might be three by something else. I mean, it's up to, to, up to that, and the proportions of it may change, and if it is, say, you know, long and thin rather than short and squat, it might look different as well. I don't think that's unreasonable, people have to be able to see it from far away.
Let's, let's say that we have an opinion that it's too big.
You can't see that cable from far away.
Sorry, what?
Let's stipulate that we differ in our opinion about what huge is versus what is, is reasonable.
Well, you have to look at the zoning ordinance, too.
Well, we know that he's asking for relief, and we know what he's asking for.
Do you know, have you read the requirements for the CB and the other sign permit requirement?
Are we allowed to tell him the size from that?
We don't even allow that, it's just four by eight.
That's crazy.
But that's the point, that's why he's here asking for a variance, because he wants to do something that we don't allow, so we have to decide, is this going to damage the town?
I agree with Celia that four by eight is huge.
Hold on just a second. Mr. Regan?
So I have read the application, as well as I have read our zoning ordinance, and I think this building presents some unique challenges and opportunities. This is not just kitchen fifty-six that has one building facing the road, you need one sign. We've got a unique opportunity here with the rail trail, um, as well as with the parking on that western end. So I, I'm anxious to hear other points of view, but where, where I sit, I am comfortable with this. I would have liked to have seen some more details on exact signage sizes. I think that's one of the issues we had the last time around, and I thought we were pretty clear that that seemed like a reasonable request of the zoning board. However, having said that, I am comfortable with where you're going with this.
Can I chime in?
Absolutely.
Sure. So, you know, so one, one thing, uh, you know, specific to the rear of the building, right? Like when, when, you know, pedestrian traffic's a little bit different, where it's a little bit, you know, slower, but, um, you know, snowmobiles in the wintertime, you know, we want hours on there so people can see when we're open, you know, if we're not actually open at the time they're driving by, so, you know, I understand the concern about, uh, the size of the sign, but, um, you know, at, at the end of the day, we're, we're a business that's coming to town, we're going to be paying taxes, we're investing a substantial amount of money into the building, so we want people to know, you know, when we're going to be open, what we are, you know.
Can't you do it on a smaller sign? Because these people are going by, they're walking, maybe they're snowmobiling, but that's going to be known. And it's, well, correct me if I'm wrong, we don't allow signs on the rail trail, advertising signs.
Well, this won't be, I mean, this will be on his building.
Yeah, we don't control the signage on the rail trail. Celia, is your concern that it, you know, it, we don't control it? Takes from the character of the town?
Yes, I do.
That's your concern?
On all sides.
Yeah, that's reasonable, I get it.
I really, I feel strongly about that, because we have, we're trying very hard to make that town more, um, village. More decent and suburban.
So what sign can be acceptable? What size sign do you think would be acceptable, Celia?
You know.
No, I mean, do you have a number? He wants thirty-two square feet.
I would say whatever the zoning ordinance has said, um, a smaller sign, not, not four by eight.
I would point out.
I'd like to, he, um, what's his name was talking about, uh, a sign that was long, but much narrower, more narrow.
But that's what I said, that could still, it could still be long and narrow, and it could still be the same, uh, square feet. We're, we're giving him a, a square feet figure, that's what we've been talking about, and the four by eight was sort of a hypothetical thing, so. But I think, you know, thinking about this in a historic context, this was formerly, you know, a railroad, it probably had signs on it that said, you know, Great Northern or whatever. I mean, this is a commercial district where people had signs once upon a time, it's, it's not a residential district, so I don't find that particularly hard considering that it's a commercial building, and it can be done with perfectly good taste. I mean, people had signs in eighteen seventy, or whenever that, that was built.
Yeah, you can still see the shadow of signage on Holmquist Building, which is directly adjacent
Exactly.
to this building.
And it's.
In the CB district.
Don't want him to be able to make any history himself, I mean.
You're allowed to have forty square feet for the, for the one sign that you're allowed.
You want to make it, you want to, you want it to look nice.
So all, old stuff is, is, is nice, is that what you're telling me?
I'm telling you.
You guys want me to, you guys want me to require you speak only to me?
What?
Do you want me to require that you speak only through me?
Why?
Because you have lost civility.
I am lost.
The two of you are arguing in public on a recording. Now stop it. That's it, stop it.
Okay, I'm going.
Thank you, ma'am.
And, and I resent what you say, and I don't think you have any right saying that to me, so I am done, and you know how I feel, and I know you're going to screw it all up anyway, so. I can tell you more.
Mr. Moyer, if you can hear us, would you please raise your hand? You don't have to say anything, just raise your hand. Mr. Moyer, just put your own hand.
He's virtually raising.
Oh, sorry. I did the digital raise. What is, I did have a question. What is the protocol? Are guests able to make comments and ask questions?
You are allowed to, yes. We will take questions during the public comment section of the hearing. At the moment, we are still in our presentation and we'll do a motion, then we'll discuss, et cetera. But we will take, we will take questions from the audience, yes. So to explain what just happened, I stepped in probably a little heavy-handedly to stop an argument and to try to get the temper down, and instead I paused Steely to leave the room suddenly, and she tripped over the cord and unplugged our conference room PC which has no battery backup on it. And so that's we are recording again. We had just come out of a five-minute recess. And the committee would like to extend our apologies to Mr. Thomas for the interruption.
No worries.
And we'll, we'll move along.
So could, do you mind if I just chime in with one other point?
Yes.
You know, I, I know that I'm not a resident of the town, but you know, we are bringing a, a business to town. I don't want, you know, distasteful signs any more than you do, right? Like i- i- if we're putting up things that are offensive to the public, you know, they're not going to frequent my business. So, you know, I would ask that, you know, you, you guys, trust me that we, you know, we're gonna do what's right for the community and what's right for our business, you know. I, I'm not intending to put up massive billboards by any means, you know. Our, our intention here is to make sure that folks know where we're at from whatever direction they're coming, and, uh, you know, what we provide. So that may include hours, it might include, you know, New Hampshire-made craft beer, you know, something like that. So, um, I just wanted to get that out there, that, you know, we're, we're incentivized as well to not put up offensive signage.
What's the name of the business that goes on the side? I know you're Boville's Brewing. Is that what goes on the side?
No, it's, uh, our trade name is Optimistic Brewing.
Optimistic, okay. I like that.
I don't think we're worried about that.
No, I was just curious.
Yeah. No, I, I mean, we're not worried that you're gonna put up offensive signage. Steely's concerned, and I think we'd all like to hear it addressed, is that thirty-two square feet seems like a lot to, to me. It seems like a lot on the western side when all you're really trying to cover there is a parking lot. Um, I'd be more inclined to look favorably on a smaller sign on that side and a, you know, up to thirty-two square feet on the rail trail side.
See where it says at or under? Says at or under, they could be smaller.
Yes, at or under thirty-two square feet.
May I make an observation?
Yes, ma'am.
As you think about this, just imagine how many letters are in the words and how, you know, if, if a letter is a foot high, that means you can have, you know, on four feet high, you can have four rows of a foot-high letters. Those are not huge letters. So I'm saying, I think it, it's seems huge to us right here, but up on a building, something's gonna have a very different effect.
Yeah, it does seem huge to me.
Well, and Madeline, it says on the request, at or under thirty-two square feet per sign.
Yeah.
Hey, Dan, how'd you come up with the thirty-two?
He can make them smaller if he wants to.
So I wa- I watched the video from the, um, the previous, um, request, and I, I understand that you guys wanted a number. I, I, I started talking to, uh, our graphic design company, and, um, we're unclear what we're gonna do yet. You know, I need to get the ball rolling here, so I put a number in there that I thought was the maximum. You know, on the, on the rear of the building, it may be thirty-two square feet. I, I respect, uh, your comment about the western side of the building. I suspect we probably could go a little smaller there, uh, for the reasons you mentioned, but, um, you know, I wanted to put a maximum in there so we had something to talk about. Maybe it's twenty-nine, you know, I, I just, I haven't gotten there yet. Um, alright, so that's, that's where I got there.
We got two more of these to go through. Can we, uh, can we get a motion to approve or deny? I'd like to make a motion to approve. Uh, sure.
Hey. My question is simply, Dan, or my, my question to
Long and civil, I don't care.
Illuminated sign, it's gonna be
So to be, uh, the sign itself will not be illuminated. To be clear, there is, uh, there are some, uh, accent lights that are facing where we would put the signage. So, um, you know, currently, our plan would be to use those at night, but, um, you know, nothing, the sign itself wouldn't have power to it. That answers your question.
Well, it does. I, my concern is I own all of the land on the other side, on the side of yours, so I just wanted to be sure it didn't illuminate my picture window on the front.
Oh, sure.
While I'm five hundred feet away, but, um.
So, those lights, John, are those lovely lights that point down.
Yeah, I, I think they are. The, the lights that are there, we haven't noticed, or if they've been turned on, they're probably
Well, those are, they've put new fixt- Brian put new fixtures, and they point down the way they should.
There's rules in the ordinance already about no glare, et cetera, and about how it's okay to light signs. I don't know if they're very specific. But under consideration here before us right now is whether you can have the sign at all. If you need to do something outside the ordinance for the, for the style of lighting, you'd have to come back and talk to us again about that. Otherwise, you would, you would follow the, the ordinance for the lighting.
It would still be, oh, I'm sorry.
David, go ahead.
Yeah, go. Um, as someone who, uh, many years ago had to adhere to, uh, ordinances regarding signs with my practice, um, and was involved in the discussions when Jakes went in about what their signs, um, were going to be. Why are we looking at, um, changes from current ordinance, um, that other people have had to deal with? Accommodate.
Because he asked.
I don't find
Do you want an answer?
Bringing that in. And, and it's a good business. You might be able to do that.
You've asked a question. Do you want an answer?
I will, and I'm done, thank you. Having three signs of that size seems excessive.
The answer is technical and simple. It is because he asked the board to consider a variance. And under law, we have to evaluate whether his request would hurt the town or the public in such a way that isn't um, in accordance with the law. That's why.
I would, uh, assert that, uh, if others have had to follow ordinances, the law, as you say, um, why shouldn't he?
Because he is using the appeal process.
Why, what is he doing that's not following the law? He's coming?
He has knocked out deeper pockets. David, that is not why he is able to ask for a variance. He has paid the fee to come before the variance the ZBA and ask for a variance. It's that simple. We have to evaluate his request in accordance with the law and by the standards set forth for us to do that. Had you wanted a variance for your signs, you could have done the same thing. Any other people who came before the board and asked for variances, those requests were evaluated on the merit of their application.
Turned down.
And they may have been turned down, yes. In this case, we might approve it based on the merits of his application and the, and the circumstances about this property. This is not favoritism, this is not a conspiracy, this is not you didn't do something we like. This board strives to keep it very fair and simple. Do you have anything else on that topic to say?
May I make a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Let's remember that all of these signs are not visible at once. You know, you, you, the one on the rail trail has no bearing on, on the one on the front because you can't, you can't see it. So you, it's not as if it's changing the aspect of the main street or of, you know, all of a sudden it's, the whole building's gonna be, you know, covered with horrible signs. These are things that you're gonna be able to see one at a time when you're looking at that particular, uh, plane of the facade.
A good point, thank you.
Does, does he have to ask the rail trail people about the sign on the back of the building? No.
I still think it's a matter of relativity, so it would be really good if we knew the size of each side of the building, because, you know, thirty-two-foot square foot sign maybe, okay, on, but maybe on that west side, maybe a little too big, or maybe it's not. But relativity is, is important here.
So, so I know, uh, for a fact that the gable ends of the building are forty feet. While there was a recess, I, uh, just pulled up Google Maps and used the scale. So this is close, but it's not exact, so forgive me for that. But, uh, the, the long side is approximately eighty feet, so it's forty feet by approximately eighty.
Okay.
What's the height? I do not know. Let's call it ten feet. So you're talking about four hundred square feet. Yeah, I believe the twelve-foot ceilings inside. Twelve foot?
Then the proportions and things may change depending on which side, you know, which side you put it on, the side, and, and the amount of information. If, if anything, I might ask if, if we decide, if we deferred this to have a, a clearer plan of, of what is wanted, because as I say, the, the sides of the building are completely different shapes, and that may affect what, what, you know, you put up there. That's all.
Would the board like to consider asking for, um, more detailed planning?
On the west side, I think would be a good idea. The other two sides, you know, they're big enough to accommodate a thirty-two-square-foot sign, no problem.
Kind of makes a comment about the west side, too. Homequest at the new apartment building pretty much blocked the view from the rail trail toward everything, so, um, I think you'd probably need a sign in the gable, but I'm not sure how big it needs to be, and, um, I guess, I guess at this point in the discussion, I trust him to do it right.
As I recall, the purpose of putting a sign on the gable end there was to show the people in the parking lot and who were passing by. It, it was more about letting the people in the parking lot know this is, this is the building that you need, that you came to visit. So I don't think it needs to be that big.
Could I, could I ask a question?
Yeah.
It, it, it sounds like the concern is really with the west, western gable end. If, you know, if, if I, I would prefer not to kind of kick the can down the road, because I got a lot of work to do, and I, I respect if that's your decision, but, um, you know, could we, could we come up with another number that you feel more comfortable with, and, and if we said thirty-two square feet on the front and the rear, and then, you know, mid-twenty, or, or whatever the number is for the western side, is that an appropriate, uh, path forward?
As somebody who's does artistic and creative things, my feeling about this is a lot of it depends on the graphics and what the graphic designer comes up with and, and, and what it will look like. I think it's very hard to just say off the top of our head that a certain area is, is necessary. It seems like it's okay to put an up, a top limit on it, but it might, a, a good designer might not want it that big anyway for other reasons.
What if, what if we made a motion, this is, I'm not making it yet, but what if we made a motion that the signage be no more than thirty-two square feet?
That's what he's asked for.
Yeah, that's what it says.
Yeah.
Or under, it says here, at or under thirty-two square feet.
How do you feel about twenty-four feet on the, on the western end? And Madeline, I'm thinking that because the likely viewing distance on that side is, is shorter, and they, and they don't need to put as much information on that side.
My feeling is, you, on a big sign, a billboard sign like that, that announces the business, the most you would probably put anyway is something like, you know, the name of the brewery, Craft Brewery. The, the hours and some of those other things, you, you'd probably put somewhere else, because also you'd want something that could change. I mean, the hours may change seasonally. You don't necessarily want those up there permanently. So it seems to me that, that there's not a huge amount of text that needs to be up there, but what needs to be up there needs to be clear for people to see and give some sort of graphic, you know, look, make it look cute or old-fashioned, or whatever it is that you, you want it, want it to look like. And that's not necessarily a function of size, that's a function of proportions and lettering and coloring and a whole bunch of stuff. So, as I say, a graphic artist would, would be thinking about that, how it would fit with the building, not, oh, let's get the biggest thing up here that, that we need. So I, I Sorry, what?
No, I was gonna say, I agree with you, Madeline. I, I think, uh, Dan is working with a graphic designer, and he's going to do it, um, not to blast the biggest sign he can, but to fit the character of the town, fit with the character of the establishment. And I could see a big sign in the front and the back, and a more moderate, I don't wanna nail, nail him down to it has to be twenty-four feet.
Yeah, that's good, that's a good number. Twenty-four feet?
Yeah, I think twenty-four feet on the west side, and then go with the
Twenty-four square?
Twenty-four square feet. Six by four is enough for him to get the notice to the people in the parking lot that this is where they wanna go. The other two sides, I think, are okay, because they're longer and bigger, and it gives him more flexibility, yeah.
I also agree that, um, he doesn't wanna kick the can down the road. He wants to open them by Memorial Day. If he's got flexibility and you're comfortable with twenty-four, I'd be comfortable. If you're not comfortable with twenty-four, I'm comfortable giving him some wiggle room here and sticking with thirty-two.
Yeah, we're gonna come up with, Patrick, what was thirty-two? Did somebody give you advice?
So, I, I, I went to the largest that I thought was appropriate, um, just knowing that you guys wanted a number from the last, the last time, when Brian came. So I gave you the size that I thought we, we wouldn't exceed. You know, if, if the western end is a, a sticking point here, I think I can work with twenty-four square feet. I would, I would appreciate thirty-two on the other two sides, but I can work with twenty-four on the, on the western gable then.
Can we put that detail in a motion?
Yes, sure. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the applicant's, uh, appeal for, uh, two signs of not more than thirty-two square feet to be on the north and both ends of the building, and twenty-four square-foot signs be on the western end of the building.
I second the motion.
The, uh, the north side is already covered by the ordinance, so we don't need to take an exception for the north side.
Right, so the variance, we grant the variance for the, um, south side that faces the rail trail and for the west side that faces the parking lot.
Can, can we say gable for the west, add the word gable for the western side?
It's not necessary.
What if he decides not to put it on the gable?
Correct.
Put it over the door.
That's a good
It won't fit.
Alright, we had a quick question from the audience. I remember Mr. Moyer wanted to speak. So before we go to discussing the motion any further.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment from rail trail's perspective on the sign. If it's on the building, I believe it's a non-issue. The rail trail would have no say in signage on a side of a building.
Thank you. That's, that's the, that's what he's here for, is to ask for it on the side of the building.
Call the question, there's a motion on the floor.
Do we need any further discussion?
I don't know.
Alright, I'd like to name the criteria for a variance, just to make sure that we have all at least touched on thinking about them. Granting a variance to put signs on the back of the building and the, and the western side of the building will not be contrary to the public interest. Not gonna cause any damage to the town, I don't think. Madeline's quite enough, they're viewed independently of one another. These are small, relatively small, and they, um, they're facing what used to be is effectively a second street. The spirit of the ordinance is observed. Yeah, we are preventing huge signs from, um, destroying the character of the neighborhood, which is effectively what the sign ordinance is doing. Substantial justice is done.
Yeah, the owner wouldn't be able to advertise if he wasn't allowed to put up signs.
The values surrounding property will not be diminished, I think. I, I can't imagine how property values would be diminished
No.
by this. Literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance will result in unnecessary hardship. In this case, we fall back on the second prong, which says, we're not advancing the public good, we're not protecting any other citizens' properties, and therefore, there's no good reason to prohibit this, this use, is what they would say.
Yeah, and the special feature of the property is it has the rail trail of a sow.
Yeah, exactly. It has the second, the second side, yeah.
Which is a fact, another commercial corridor. Okay, uh, does anybody else want to say anything from the audience before we start?
Has been called, fascinating.
David, we don't go strictly by Ro- Robert's rules. You know that, you've been told that before. We don't do points of order. Right?
Nothing more to say.
Thank you. You can say thank you for soliciting our opinion, again, if you'd like. That would be appropriate. Say anything else?
Appreciate some of the comments.
Anybody in, on the phone like to comment? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Madeline, say your name and say your
Madeline Johnson via Teams, votes aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Mike Dean, aye.
Dan Regan, aye.
Bill Finger, aye.
Bob Kuzick is not voting, he's not seated. So you have your, uh, sign variance.
Thank you.
And the wording in that variance should be um, one sign on the back not to exceed thirty-two square feet, one sign on the western side not to exceed twenty-four square feet. We don't have to mention the front. You want cooler setback. The cooler does not make excessive noise, and it's not offensive in size or shape to the spirit of the downtown area. And the only other space for this cooler is inside, which would reduce the amount of seating to the general public, which is not actually contrary to the public interest, but good try.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
There's that little sticky-out piece behind with the shaming fence around it. Is that where you're meaning to put it?
Yes. This is on the riverside of the property? That's correct.
No, it's, it's on the side, it, it's on the side of the parking lot across sixty-six. It's sticky out on the back of one end.
Yeah, put the map back up.
It's the riverside, I'm gonna share.
That's it on the plan, isn't it?
So Dan, how loud is that, the fence?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
What's your decibel? So, uh, we're gonna run it with a unit that is equivalent to a residential AC unit. So no louder than that.
What, loud decibels?
I, I don't know what a
I think that's important, because I've heard, you know, residential, terrible, and I've heard commercial, I just put in a big generator that has sixty-eight decibels, which you can hardly hear, but I've seen generators so high. So I think it's important to know what the decibel level is, especially if there's, you know, residence, it's close. It's important.
Then I can Google what a
Dan, while you're Googling that, you currently have the same unit at your existing location, correct?
That is correct.
Can you hear it from your neighbor's backyard?
No.
Can you hear it throughout your backyard?
How close do you have to be to hear?
There
sincere.
There's a river right there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the, the Mascova River is right there, and there's that little parking lot.
Looks like it's about a hundred feet away.
And
river. She's down. So if I had
There's a place where there was a dam in the river, and there's a tree falling across it, and you can hear that anyway. I mean, to, to do the stuff, that river noise, and where it goes under the bridge on Main Street, there's a lot of noise.
You tell people at Kitchen Fifty-Six that are sitting there in the afternoon eating, so it's important that you don't cause Kitchen Fifty-Six issues relative to you, the level of noise. I mean
And when people go by on the rail trail, they wanna hear the river, they don't wanna hear it from across there. So, um, to answer your question, it looks like fifty to sixty decibels.
That's, that's
That's nothing.
That was a qualitative question. When you're in your backyard, right now, and you're sitting against the picnic tables, can you hear?
If you're on the side of the building and you're within a few feet, yes, but if you're on the other side of the building, no. If you're inside the building, no. Uh, so looking at that map, if I had to guess, the parking on the closest to the building, you might be able to hear it.
That's
The parking on the far side, you will not hear it.
Up across the street to Bob's
No.
Those are apartment houses across the street, and then that on the absolute left is George's parking lot.
How many square feet is the, um, unit?
So we're working through that now. It's a modular unit, so we can build it really whatever size we want. The largest we would go is sixteen by twenty.
So we can grant you a variance for a very specific footprint. So we need to know what that is. We could do it not to exceed, as, as we just did in the other one.
So, uh, there's a little bit more to this that it might be worthwhile if I explain. So we're actually gonna be, uh, what we're proposing is coming off of our property onto the town So, we're actually gonna be, uh, what we're proposing is coming off of our property onto the town property. So, uh, it's gone in front of the select board and, uh, to my knowledge, they've approved a lease of that piece of land uh for us for a year. While, while we hire a surveyor to come out and survey the lot and then do a boundary line adjustment where we would do a swap of land for um what, what we're uh crossing over. We would give land back to the town in an equal or greater value.
A new line right about there, that'll get their cooler onto this lot. And talking about maybe cutting off some of this and basically swapping.
How about making that new piece of land big enough so that the setbacks inside of it? What are the setbacks there? Twenty feet?
What's this thing about Granite State Electric? They own a top pole there?
An easement for a pole maybe, not sure.
I don't know, but it says something about Granite State, also doesn't always feed and supply, but that's from
Anywhere there's a telephone pole, Mastabees.
Anywhere there's a pole, Granite State Electric owns it? I mean, there's a pole there, supposedly.
So, Mike, yeah, point of view, I haven't read it. Um, I think the board has raised some good questions that you've answered sufficiently. My only problem with it is I hate the idea that it takes up the space that was going to be a bear garden. And I would encourage you when you are looking at the land swap to take that into consideration.
Sharon, I see your hand. Rob will help me remember to let you speak when it's time.
Just from, uh, just so I understand your perspective, you're, you're wanting outdoor seating and just so that we don't lose track of that, is that what you're saying? Yeah, so, uh
That's not a board request. You understand that?
Understood, okay.
That's just a personal request.
Yes.
Between the building and the rail trail or in front of the building?
So, right now, what our plan is, is to do some outdoor seating along the front of the building and possibly on the western gable end as well. Um, so the, the property line um isn't going to allow us to do seating in between the building and the rail trail. Um, the property line is like six feet off of the back of the building.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, those were all
You got a really weird shaped lot. I'm thinking about the hardship criteria because that's where this almost always comes down on. And I it's, it's gonna weigh on are we, are, if we enforce it here, are we protecting something that the zone, that the zoning ordinance was meant to protect that's more valuable than saving you space inside for seating?
Can you walk me through that again, your thinking?
Yeah, um that's, that's second test in the hardship criteria boils down to basically if we can, if we if we deny the request, it has to be on the grounds that something in the ordinance specifically applies here in this situation, and if we violate it, it will, it will harm the public good. So
Scramble question.
Could you wait until I'm done?
Yep. I thought you were.
Okay. Does that, does that make sense today? Is that enough of an answer? Or do you want me to keep talking?
No, I see what you got. I get the gist of it.
Yeah, all right. So if, if, if letting them invade the setback there for whatever purpose, because we don't tell you what you do with that invasion. If we let you have that, is that gonna do damage to the public good, or is it gonna hurt property values, or is it, you know, any of the other normal things? Um, but specifically in the hardship case, are we causing you a difficulty by requiring you adhere to the setback law? That isn't balanced by some benefit to the town, some benefit to the public. That's what I, that's what I struggle with in, in cases like this. Because I don't think it's gonna hurt the property values, um depending on how you implement. We could put in some requirement, we could say like, the sound has to be less than sixty decibels at a hundred feet. So a sound pressure measurement is no good unless you specify the distance from the, from the source. We could do things like that. We could put a time limit on it and say we don't really have to. I was thinking about the boundary line adjustment you're gonna do in the future. When you come back, when you go to do that boundary line adjustment, you and the town are gonna have to come back to us for another variance. Because you're gonna be creating a non-conforming law when you do that. And I don't know if we can write this variance in such a way to take that into effect uh into account. Maybe we can.
What's the thing gonna look like? Are we gonna be able to see it through the screen?
There's a picture of it, isn't there?
Uh, there's not a picture. Sorry, that's for the third, for the third variance.
Okay.
So, um, there's a couple ways
You wanted to say, right?
I have a question.
Was it related to what I was talking about?
Sort of. There was on that picture, a squiggly orange line with X's on it at toward the back of the building. And no, no, over here, whatever, whatever.
He's turning them on.
Oh, fair. But, but, the X's and the squiggly line.
Yeah.
What is that?
Some kind of a fence at some point.
It's a what?
I think it was a fence.
Yeah, it's no longer applicable. Dan, do you have the part number or whatever for the cooler?
But it's not there anymore. And is that
Used cooler.
That sticky out thing, is that part of his lot?
Yes.
I can get something that's representative.
Yellow.
Oh, I thought that that line would be straight. So, so that piece you're gonna trade?
Oh yeah, so we think this is, this is, this law is very unusual history.
Yeah, so you put up a fence.
This goes with the law for the, for the We think it must have been a siding at some point for the rail.
Yeah, they all were.
Signings here for rail cars.
To walk in.
Come off the rail itself.
Cause that yellow line is the line around the property.
That's the boundary.
That's why we show the boundary line.
Yeah, okay, well, that's, that's, I
You know, I mean
I was thinking lots look like this. Okay, so there's a piece you're gonna trade?
Yeah, we'd like to do even Steven. If, if we could give him this little bit of land here, he could give us a little bit of land here as a town. Obviously, it would, it would work to benefit both entities. And in fact, what we would like to do as a town, we talked to the selectmen and town manager, if we could get, because right now, we call this lot the rail trail lot, but interestingly, we don't, we, this is in our lands. But we don't really have access to the rail trail from this lot without the good graces of the people that own this land to let us across, which has always been the case.
Rob, this is exciting. It's off the topic.
Okay.
Do you mind if I stop you there?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. They're gonna trade some, some land. We need to decide if we're gonna allow this variance to go forward and how to write the variance if we, if we are gonna allow it to go forward. So, do we have any more questions that are really right on point here?
Well, I understand better what's happening, which I didn't understand.
Ms. Buffet, you raised your hand to speak?
Yes, hi, this might help. Um, there's a decibel chart that I looked up online. And just to give you a sense, I don't know, um, what the gentleman said. He can repeat later what the decibel level might be in that cooler. Um, so moderate rainfall is fifty decibels. So it'd be like hearing rain all the time. Sixty decibels is normal conversation or dishwashers. So, something with that noise level would be like hearing that all the time. Seventy decibels are vacuum cleaners and traffic. So assuming it's under seventy decibels and assuming in my mind that the moderate rainfall or the um con- mod- you know, conversation wouldn't impact the restaurant across the street, who wants to have people sitting out in front? Depending on where this cooler is located, how much of that noise might or might not affect them? Or anybody enjoying the rail trail. So that's just my comment.
Hey, Sharon, does your chart say what distance those are from the source?
Um, just a minute, I just lost it. Hold on, I think I can bring it back up. Um No, it's just, it's MDhearingAid.com. That's what It's just the decibels and what they sound like, sorry.
Yes, Don?
Yeah, uh, since this is a new structure and I'll have the same question for the um container building. I didn't see the Bureau of Rails and Transit on the butter list. Have they been engaged? I'm sorry, the, the, it's a, it's a very clear and specific requirement, and it would be a big risk to go ahead with this without their approval.
Is this different from the Department of Transportation?
Yeah, the Bureau of Rails and Transit is within, is within the DOT. It's a bureau within the DOT. It's the Bureau of Rails and Transit that owns the railroad right-of-way. And you need specific approval for anything that falls within their right-of-way and their, their, their budding territory.
So, Rob told us that, yes, they have notified the Department of Transportation as an a butter.
Okay, I didn't see that on the a butter's list.
Is it on the butter's list, Rob? Two hundred foot a butter's list, Bree, Rosmus, NK1, Bahavia, Aporn, scratched out, Dave's son, exec suite, Enfield town of a Poplin block, Tucker trustee, Holmquist, Keller, what are the scratched out ones? Thank you. Indian River, Carr, John P., Henry, Phil Henry, you do not have the Department of Transportation on there.
That doesn't make any sense.
All right, that's in y'all's hands. You should probably make sure that the DOT knows about this, so they don't come down on you later for not telling them.
Again, if I remember right, about twenty minutes ago, you said it was fifty to sixty decibels?
That, that's what Google says, yeah. I haven't actually measured.
Okay, so Mike, I like your idea of putting something into the potential approval, which says it cannot exceed sixty decibels at one hundred feet. And I'm open to what those exact numbers are, but I think that um protects neighbors from down the road, Dan deciding, hey, I want the, the mega cooler and putting something in. And if you'd be amenable to that, I think that's a reasonable request. Actually, sixty decibels is really low. Um, I, all my, all my mini splits run at sixty-eight, you can't hear them more than twenty feet away. I mean, just, sixty's really low. Sixty-eight would be a more I think Sharon said seventy was normal conversation, right? Yeah, I mean
Excuse me, gentlemen, sixty is normal conversation, seventy is vacuum cleaners and traffic.
I would suggest that we say um measured at sixty feet from this, from the condenser that it can't exceed sixty decibels.
It'd be sixty-eight with condenser.
What's that?
It would be sixty-eight at the unit itself, so if you're talking
It could be a lot louder at the unit.
Yeah, so if you're talking about, you know
Right.
So many feet, that's good.
Yeah, if you're ten feet from the unit, it could be a hundred decibels and it would still be only about sixty when you're a hundred feet away.
Yeah. It's like sixty B's.
Uh, it's, that's right, it's three
Goes out in the square distance. I don't recommend a hundred dB.
No, 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 no.
Well, the difference between sixty dB and sixty-three dB is a doubling, it's sound pressure. It's not just a, it's not just a step up with three units. It doubles every three units. So
Sixty-eight at the unit is appropriate maximum for three feet away.
All right. Anybody else have any background in using decibels to measure?
I trust you guys just sound really intelligent on this.
I, I work here in What's that?
I work here in
Wicked, all right.
Can I just ask one more question?
Yes.
This is just clarification. Um, when Mr. I think Moyer mentioned um the Department of Transportation, is that the general trans- Department of Transportation, or is there one specific? I thought you said something about Bureau, Bureau of Trails, Department of Transportation. Is that a separate entity?
Bureau of Rails and Transit.
He did say something specific. It's beyond the remit of our business. Rob's got a note and he'll take care of it with um, with the applicant. But you're right, it's not just the DOT.
But wouldn't that possibly have a bearing since they're in a butter on this decision that you're making tonight and you don't have information from them?
We wanted to, to persist after the lease. Do you want to persist?
I I don't know. It feels like we ought to have we ought to have notified them as an a butter of the property that we are having this hearing. And so it feels like this isn't does feel kinda sketchy. We could, I know you don't wanna delay, but there's a risk if we uh if they challenge us, they could, you know, if, if they say we don't, we're gonna, we're gonna sue you in court, challenge your ruling, and a judge could come back and say, you didn't do it right. And they could, that could stop your project until we get a chance to redo the uh, do it.
Is there a, is there a way that you could approve it conditionally on approval from this bureau? Uh, you, I guess the reason I'm asking is
That's a good suggestion. That's why you feel safe.
The reason, uh, the reason I'm asking is uh, for a couple different reasons. One, um, you know, I'm not placing blame here by any means, so don't take it that way. But, you know, I went through the process and I pulled the a butter's from the town website, so, you know, I was relying on the information that was, that was provided by, by the town of Enfield. Um, so, you know, I, like I said, I'm not placing blame there. Um, but I, but I feel that I followed the proper steps uh based on the information I had available.
Blame doesn't enter into it. A mistake was made. Um, we just have to deal with the situation on the ground. I think, so, I think we could we could say this is conditional upon approval or lack of response from the, from that bureau. Susan?
David Buffet used to be part of the Friends of the Northern Rail Trail that took care of all of this section of the rail trail.
Their representative is in the meeting with us.
And
I still am, but Don, Don is the um, the leader for the whole state. I have the right, right terminology, Don, but um he's, he's
They're, they're
Vice president and responsible for
So, so they aren't represented.
Yeah.
Oh, this is a different agency.
Different from the state bureau itself.
The land is owned by State of New Hampshire, right, Department of Transportation. And it's controlled within the Department of uh Transportation by the Bureau of Rails and Transit, which is a division in DOT. I do have it, the contact there. I will reach out to him first thing in the morning tomorrow morning and just be like, what is your thoughts? I would tell you guys to continue. The worst case scenario is we reconvene next month to reopen it and have a further input from them, and you could maybe just would say we change our minds now that the DOT's weighed in. Or you could, they could say, we're, we're happy, there's no intrusion on our land. That's their most important thing, is they don't want anybody taking anything from them. That's their perspective out there right away.
Let's do this. Um, if we're gonna, let's assume that we're gonna Let's do this. Um, if we're gonna, let's assume that we're gonna vote to approve this. The conditions of the approval would be the sound condition and the size condition. And we would say, um, this variance is to succeed the lot line rejiggering. We'll put real language in there and we'll say, all of this is conditional upon the approval um, of the Bureau, Bureau of Rails and Transit from the Department of Transportation. And then he will go and get that. And if they say, yeah, it's fine. We get documentation, then I would sign the notice of decision. And that will be the final action. That'll be the action of the board is when I sign the decision statement.
Could I ask that rather than asking for an approval from them that they have a window to respond? Uh, the reason that I ask that is my experience with government agencies is they don't always act in a timely manner.
Can you say something like that, you know, without, that, that if they don't respond within X amount of time, it's, you know, being seen as, as an approval or of, or, or that they have no objection to it? Maybe not say that it's approval, but they have no objection to it?
I'm afraid it won't work that way. We're dealing with the state Department of DOT. And they won't, they won't recognize a condition like that.
Whatever their rights are, that's what you have to abide by. So if they have the right to a specific time, whatever it is, you have to abide by it. Otherwise, you're gonna spend money.
Let's put a motion on the floor.
What's the, before we go, I want to get my question answered to Rob. How far in advance do we send notice to abutters of a meeting of the ZBIA?
Two weeks.
Two weeks, okay. So that's the most, that's the smallest window I would feel comfortable if we were gonna put a, a limit on there. I would rather have them send Rob approval to go into our, to our minutes.
Yeah.
Or into the case.
My, my thought was that we give them until the next meeting. If we don't hear from them by the next meeting, then we certainly make that, make that final, right? If, if, if they want, I mean, if they say, I'm gonna call the guy directly tomorrow. I know the guy who runs the Bureau of Rails and Transit.
Yeah.
Lou Barker. And I'm gonna say, hey, this is what happened. What would you like to do? And he's gonna tell me, oh, well. We need to have input on that. Well, I'd say, come to our next meeting then we'll, we'll reopen this. But if they're like, tell us what, what are you on to do here? What is, what did they ask for? And I explain it to them and they're like, oh, as long as you're not taking any of our land and you're not, uh, intruding onto our right of way. If there, if he says, we're fine, I'd, I'd ask for it in writing, obviously. Uh, then we could probably proceed to giving him his approval, but we'll give them their opportunity.
Yeah, so I think we can, we can write the decision. I think we can write the the, the motion and sign the decision and say pending approval by that. And then you can take that and you can decide whether it's worth your time and money to wait for them or do you want to move ahead? And that's, that's for you.
So my question is, what if they don't respond?
Then it's approved.
So, so if, if they don't approve it, if they don't not approve it, but if they don't approve, like, I've, I've faced this before, so.
If it's thirty days, we're gonna say that it's approved.
So that's, I guess that's my, my, my point is, is.
So the condition, alright, so you're saying that you, you want something in the condition that says?
If they don't respond at all, one way or the other. Alright, I don't want to be stuck in limbo, I guess is my point.
What, what's our setback? What's the allowable setback for the rails trails? I mean.
Forty-two feet.
Forty-two feet from the rail trails.
Center.
From the center of, so is this forty-two feet? Uh, it would give you a little bit more confidence in the thirty day routine or whatever it is to take one to the hell. I mean, I think, I think going out there and just saying, oh, if they don't respond. Property doesn't make any difference, but they can come back and create a problem. I think you need to know that it's okay with what you're putting and just like David says, forty-two feet from the center. You know where to put them.
If I can make a if, if I heard earlier and heard, understand properly that this was a former railroad building, then the forty-one and a quarter feet, uh, right of way is probably a non-issue, but it's all part of this needs to be addressed through the Bureau of Rails and Transit. We can speculate a lot, but it's one of the questions.
Yeah, so we can put our condition in. Um, if they don't get back to us within thirty days, you could go ahead and do anything and we could think it's all good and done. And they could come back and say, nah. Uh, we got a problem with this. You need to, you need to reopen the matter. And if they, if they force, what they probably do is ask a judge to force us to, I mean, we wouldn't do that. We would just say, yeah, we'll reopen it. We'll, we'll discuss it and let you have your say. But if, if we were, if we stuck our feet in the mud, they would go to court and tell us and get a judge to force us to reopen the matter. So you got, you got some risk there. We either wait till the next hearing and you get your, it probably gets you ruling pretty clear. Or you can take a conditional one now and do your planning work, et cetera. Um, with, with the chance that they will come around later and say, no, we gotta talk to you first. So it, it could be messy. I, I'm willing to take the risk. There's not much of a downside for us, except a black eye on our record, maybe.
Dan, do you know how far the building is from the center of the rail?
Uh, exactly, no.
They had six. You did say that was six feet from the side of the building.
Approximately. Yeah, it's not, it's not exact. I haven't measured it, but it's, it's staked currently based on a, a recent survey. And it's approximately six feet.
But that's from the.
So that, um, before zoning and before the, uh, the right of ways, so that, that's if Don says not an, an active issue, I don't think in terms of.
No, no, it's not. That's not something we have to consider here right now.
Okay, so I move that regardless of requested setback relief on the east side of the building for an outdoor cooler. I'm gonna think that's, uh, with the condition that the Bureau of Rails and Trails.
Transit.
Transit approve that request. I don't think there should be anything else in it.
You don't want to put it, remind her, revise that a little bit?
Wish you would.
Okay, let's make that condition be with the condition that the Department of Transportation's Bureau of Rails and Transit not object to this variance.
Well, that's much better.
Comma that the building for the cooler, is that right? Not exceed how many square feet? Two hundred and thirty-two square.
Three twenty.
Three hundred and twenty square feet. That the sound pressure at six feet from the center of the building not be more than sixty-eight dB.
It's from the center of the building or the center of the cooler?
Center of the cooler. Uh, let's say from, uh, measured at ten feet from the compressor.
Yeah.
Cause that's the unit that makes all the sound, right? So the sound pressure measured ten feet from the center of the compressor may not exceed sixty-eight dB.
Could you read that back to us with it?
She will, I think we had one more.
Um, you also discussed the lot, boundary line and lease situation.
Right, so semicolon, this variance shall apply to the no, we can't do that.
Then you have to have a whole nother thing for this land swap.
Land swap will have to be a, a separate variance, cause we know what your plan is. We know what the town's plan is, but we can't really decide in the future what will be there. We have to decide based on the facts at the time. Okay, so we have three conditions. Will you read that back, please?
Yep, uh, to grant the requested setback relief on the east side of the building for an outdoor cooler with the conditions that the New Hampshire Department of Transportation, BRT, uh, um, not objects to the variance, that the building for the cooler not exceed three hundred and twenty square feet. And that the sound pressure measured at ten feet from the center of the compressor not be more than sixty-eight decibels.
Any further discussion? Any comment from the audience? Any comment from the audience on the phone? I see Sharon has.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I want you to consider, please, that ten feet from the center of the cooler at sixty-eight decibels. This is near the rail trail. This is near a business across the street. This is near people in our town walking by. Sixty-eight, seventy decibels is that of a vacuum cleaner. Our town, I would feel more comfortable in my suggestion if you could say sixty decibels. That's normal conversation. It's reasonable to expect to walk through town and hear something noise that's normal conversation. It's not reasonable to hear a constant noise that's near two decibels away from a vacuum cleaner continuously. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Can you see this? Can you see the map that's displayed on the screen right now?
Yes.
Okay, can you see the eastern end of the building? It's on the right-hand side.
Um, isn't that where people enter for the rail trail?
No. Can you see that? It says sixty feet on that property line?
No, no, I can't see that, sorry. I see, um, no, I, it's too small on my screen and I can't make it large, larger.
For them, please, Rob? More, right there.
Okay, so that's sixty feet, yes?
So roughly sixty feet from right there where he's pointing to the sidewalk. Alright, what we're saying is that at ten feet, it can't exceed sixty-eight. So if it were sixty-eight dB at ten feet, that means that at twenty feet, it would be sixty-five dB. At thirty feet, it would be.
Forty feet?
Yeah, goes square.
At forty feet, it would be sixty-two dB. So now we're, so by the time we get out to the sidewalk and Main Street and across the street,
It's a whisper.
we're down to forty or fifty dB.
Okay, um, but you're very close to the rail trail. You're very close to people in the parking lot who are accessing the rail trail and going by. Um, and it's a quiet area now. Um, I think sixty is a more reasonable, um, that's normal conversational level. That's a dishwasher. Um, seventy is a vac, vacuum cleaner and traffic. It would be like that's just my recommendation. You know, you folks are gonna do what you're gonna do.
I have one question.
Yes, metal.
Yeah, is this a constant noise or is it something that cycles on and off like a refrigerator?
It, it cycles on and off, but I would say it, especially in the summertime, it will be mostly constant.
Got it.
And we're not saying it's gonna be sixty-eight dB at that distance. We're saying that's the limit. So if it's broken, it still can't exceed sixty-eight. So he's, he's estimating from what he sees on the, on Google, fifty to sixty dB.
I think we go with, with the way it's written. I think it's well-written and I think we ought to do it.
Does everybody at the table like the numbers?
Fine with the numbers. You have another.
Who's WG?
Bill Griffin, maybe?
WG, your microphone is still muted.
Yes, I think this is a business district. You're gonna hear business sounds.
Give us your full name, please.
Bill Griffin.
Thank you, Bill.
These are gonna, they will cycle on and off, but this is a business district. You're gonna hear vehicles pulling in across the street, picking up gas, all sorts of things. I don't think this is any type of noise that's really gonna deter from the town as much as the business would bring to the town.
I think we agree. I think the board agrees.
All the question.
Is there any further discussion? Can be useful?
Yeah, just another point is that this used to be a laundromat, right? There was all kinds of like washing machines right there. Fires.
Okay, the points. The variants will not be contrary to the public interest. Is that true?
Yes.
Yes.
The spirit of the ordinance is observed. The setbacks are primarily to protect against overcrowding. I don't think we've got a problem here. And by overcrowding, we mean light and air, safety, et cetera. You can't pack buildings one on top of another. Substantial justice is done. We agree, uh, the values of the surrounding property are not diminished. I think that, um, if they put a, we haven't said anything about it, but if they were to put a nice fence around it, that would help.
Yeah.
Um, and I think the sign for the sound conditions can help. Literal enforcement of the provisions. So if we force them to stick to the setback, does that help us? Not really. I don't think it protects anybody from problems with light and air, crowding. And it would mean they can't use as much of their internal space for business. Uh, okay. Alright, let's start roll call with Madeline on the phone. All in favor?
Aye.
Madeline Johnson says aye from the phone.
Here's my, my face, aye.
Aye. Susan?
Aye.
Mike Dean says aye.
Daniel again, aye.
Bill Finger, aye.
Alright, there's your cooler variance approved. Thank you. Um, should have that signed on Tuesday. You taking a little bit of risk with the, with the DOT, but.
I don't see how we can do the third variance until we hear from the DRT.
Third variant, setback relief. Bo Mills Brewing is requesting setback relief on the southern section of this property along the rail trail. You want to put a modified shipping container, um, which will contain a kitchen and serving window, not yet. The container will be placed within four feet of the property line. This will serve two purposes. Explanation follows. So what you're saying is you want to put a shipping container, which is pictured here on the back of the building that faces the, uh, faces the rail trail. And it will be within four feet of the property line? What's the current distance to the property line?
Uh, I'm sorry, I don't understand your question. The current distance of what?
The building.
Of the building, it's a, it's approximately six feet.
So this shipping container is only two feet wide?
No, so I, I, I believe that's probably wrong and it's, it's, we would put it so that it's parallel to the back wall, so approximately six feet. So I, I.
You put a diagram on here that I'm missing, that I must not have seen.
So, uh, right next to the picture of the, the container, there's the picture of the building. Uh, nope, sorry, this page here. So I blocked out, uh, where we would intend.
Oh, I see what you did. Okay.
Oh, where the four dots are, that's where you'd put it?
Correct. So we see the map again. Mister Taylor.
Little unzooming.
It would be where the one nine is, where the one nine is up against the end of the building.
Okay.
Is that what you mean?
That's correct.
So some of it will be back behind the edge of the building?
Uh, no, so it would start at the edge of the building and come into my parking lot.
And you're saying your building right now is six feet from the property line?
Approximately.
This is gonna run that same angle, so you're gonna be six feet, not four feet, but you're toward it in your.
I apologize for the error.
I know.
This is your building. This is the rail trail behind it. So this is obviously not to scale. Better. That's what we care about. With six feet up here. Are you talking about putting a container like this?
No, no. Do you want me to draw it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The same.
Hey, Rob, can you enlarge the picture on the, uh, that you have there?
Yeah. Okay.
Rob, can you, I can't see what's going on there, cause what I have on my screen, I think is what is on your screen.
I'm drawing on the whiteboard, we're drawing on the whiteboard.
I know, that's what I can't see.
What, what is it? Number's ten by?
Forty by eighty is the size of the, the depot building.
Yeah.
Ten by twenty is the size of the container. He wants to put the long edge parallel with the long edge of the depot building. So that basically he's putting a twenty-foot-long, ten-foot-deep addition on the building um, that extends the side of the building along the rail trail by twenty feet to the west. Madeline, does that give you enough to sketch it?
Uh, yeah, as I say, I don't know why the way that thi- this screen setup is, you know, I have a little view of sort of all of you and then this little ribbon up at the you're like, right now I see you, Mike, and then at the top I have this ribbon that's sort of a panorama, but I, it doesn't show the, the, you know, the whiteboard.
All right, I'll try to describe it again, maybe if you've got a pencil and paper handy, you can sketch it.
What you just said now is, is quite clear, it's just, it, don't worry about it, I, don't worry, I, that made, your description now made me understand what was going on.
All right, that's what we've got shown on the whiteboard.
Not gonna s- stick further toward the rail trail.
It's like that.
Than the eighty-foot building.
We just drew it to explain that.
You did, but he said something about.
He said four foot in his application and he's wrong. He's told us that that is incorrect.
But that's the way it is, it's right along the same line as the eighty-foot.
Correct.
Walk.
Dan, what do you, end up?
That makes more sense. Are you, are you planning to do that right away, or is that when you get the money?
Yeah, so, um, the, uh, th- this is a concept we're kicking around, um, I'm trying to take advantage of the few hundred-dollar fee to appear in front of you and kind of put everything out there at once, um, it likely won't happen this year. Um, but because I'm here in front of you, I figured, kind of save everybody's time and talk about it now.
And Dan, what are you taking up when you put that on the lot? Are you taking up a couple of parking spaces?
One parking space.
One parking space. That's right, those parking spaces are roughly the size of a, I mean, they're pretty close to the size of the container. Isn't that gonna look kind of crappy? It's not gonna look great.
So one.
Kind of blocks your front door from the rail trail.
You're, we can graffiti it.
Can I, can I?
Yes.
Thank you. So, um, we under- we understand that concern and we're, uh, you know, if, if we do this, we're gonna do it as tastefully as we can. Uh, one thought that we had is, uh, try to get some of the community involved and do like a mural kind of thing, um, to try to make it look like it fits, um, you know, we're not gonna put some rusted box on Main Street and expect people to be okay with it. It kind of goes back to, you know, we're incentivized to make this look good, because if it doesn't, you know, the community's not gonna support the project, so.
Yeah, there's some slack in that, though, I mean, get away with a lot of sin.
I, I'm so.
Rob? Hold on, Rob?
Dr. Buffet raises a pretty good point, that in my little description here on this warning.
Yeah.
I did not put the information about this here.
Thank you.
So, uh, I would be willing to offer our applicant waived fees to come back for this one if he so chooses. My recommendations, that's gonna be an issue, that we should probably hear it at another meeting subsequent to this one.
Yeah, I think so, I was just thinking that's.
Feel comfortable, I don't feel comfortable doing something so hypothetical right now either, because, you know, one, maybe, you know, maybe they won't be able to do it for their, I, I certainly hope, wish them all success, but, you know, things happen. So then we've given this, you know, permission and somebody else buys the building and does something else, I, I just don't think that we can give something on, on, well, we might want to do this. I, I, I don't feel comfortable doing that and I, if we had voted again, brought it to a vote, I would vote against it at this moment.
Well, and.
Let's just, let's just suggest that he take that back, Rob's comp, uh, coupon for.
Yeah, well, Rob will waive the fees and then the bureau, cause you'll have to have the Bureau of Rails and Trails in on this again, so might as well get them.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, I think this is not mature enough of, to, to make a decision right now.
Well, I, I don't disagree with, um, the idea of asking it at the back, I think that's in everybody's best interest. Um, but having said that, just for clarity's sake, just because we approve something doesn't mean a applicant has to go forward with it. Right? So.
No. No, because it goes with the property, it means that, you know, if somebody comes along, you know, from now, they've, they've got it and they can do it, because it's with the property.
No, it's, it's not quite, it's not quite like that, if they have to use the permission granted in the variance within two years.
Right, but they're not obligated.
Right, they're not obligated.
Right.
So, I need to have a contract.
But you know, here's, here, here's an issue that, you know, I have a problem with, through this whole thing, when Dergan came in, when he asked for approval, it, it, it was, I hate to say this, but it's kind of like we were being played. And then all of a sudden it comes back again, so I think, I think adding on a container right now is way beyond the pale, since this is the second time around, it's.
But it's, it's not.
Well, yeah, you, you had an approval. But did, didn't we approve Dergan's request?
For his signs.
Yeah, yeah, we did, we approved his signs.
No, you do not.
No, we made him, no, we didn't approve his.
Right, especially for the, for the wholesale sale, that's right, but not the signs. It felt like he came to us to workshop the idea of a variance receipt, and we don't do that. And we told him that and he went away, and then he went away. So to me, this feels like, even though we've heard about it before, this is the, this is the first time this business certainly has come to us.
And to me, the container feels a little bit like a workshop, I like to have a, a very clear presentation in front of me and know exactly what I'm voting for at this particular, you know, at this particular moment, not sort of a theoretical, well, down the road, we might want to do this.
Yeah, uh, just to be clear, I, I, I'm not pushing it back against, uh, deferring this, I'm, I'm fine with that and I understand why. That being said, um, I, in no way, shape or form am I trying to workshop anything, I have very clear, a very clear vision on what we want to use this for. And if that's not, if that's not clear, I'd like to address that now, because, um, this, I'm not intending to use this as a workshop, I mean, we have a very clear path on.
Dan, there's a big difference between when Brian came in with his.
Oh, yeah.
We're, don't worry about that.
I need to attitude on night and day.
But, well, we're, and I think we probably shouldn't bother talking anymore about this, what we could suggest is talk to your, uh, people about maybe some way to, to cover it with, you know, something to make it look like it's part of the building rather than like it's just a steel shipping container.
Sure, understood.
Because, you know, if you come in and you show us this picture of a shipping container, again.
Well, one of those wouldn't shed, you know, that they make?
Yeah.
Prefab wouldn't shed.
Just a question, did you take action on Rob's suggestion of, uh, deferring, uh, uh, fee to come back for this?
We haven't got to that point yet.
Yep, yeah, we're, we don't have to, we can, we can leave it to the administrator to.
Okay.
That's, you don't have to take an action.
All right, that's fine.
He can issue a coupon.
I think your idea of waiving the fees is excellent.
Yeah, it was on me, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't catch that, as I put this all together, the third variance thing.
Yes.
And he and I noticed that today as we were chatting, so.
Okay, folks, so we don't have another motion and decision to make, you've got two variances. Um, I think we're done with you, Mr. Thomas, have you done with us?
Yes, thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, you made a good presentation.
Thank you.
And we'll come and taste the beer. We still got minutes to approve.
We'll hold you up into January twenty-fourth minutes, can I ask a question? Did we ever see the revised November twelfth minutes?
No, we did not.
Or something.
To Rob. We're gonna have to talk to Rob. Rob, that'll be two strikes for three.
Didn't know the twelve minutes last time.
We talked a lot about him, she had to do significant provisions.
Oh, that's right.
Look at those before we vote.
Yeah.
All right.
It would be good if you'd send us a copy.
No, 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 no. No, she sends it to Rob, she works for Rob.
Oh, okay, she sends it to Rob and he sends it to us.
Did, right. Which she did.
Well, I move we approve the minutes of January fourteenth. I couldn't find it, I couldn't find a period out, please.
Yeah.
Um, so now it's on the floor and you can discuss it.
I second the motion to approve the minutes of January fourteenth.
Yeah, and we have in these minutes, um, a good summary of our requests to Whitney to get, to redo them. Um, we'll note that Whitney did redo them and submitted them to Rob, and Rob did not send them out to the chair, or to, I mean, to the can you put the right word in there, Whitney? It's the board. So we can't, we can't review those and approve them tonight. We'll deal with those in our next meeting. I don't have any problem, any more problem with these.
I couldn't find a thing wrong, I couldn't find a, hear it out, please. You do such a good job.
All right. Hearing no objections, I will declare the minutes approved. This is the January fourteenth minutes. There's a formal phrasing, I'll let you know it, without objection.
That's pretty good, yeah, without objection, the, the minutes are approved.
There we go, okay.
You don't need a roll call vote for it, that's good.
You know, Madeline's going off.
Right, uh, we should probably mention Madeline did not sign up for reelection. Was that intentional or was that non-intentional?
That was intentional. I loved, I loved working with you, but I'm not spending, I'm, I, I am spending more time out of Enfield, so it's, it, I, it doesn't, whatever, I, I don't feel eligible to, to participate. Which is sad. I've, I've enjoyed it, I've thought everybody's done a great job, I will be there for the March meeting, cause I, the stir term is still good in March, cause it's March eleventh before the town, the town meeting, so I'll be there, I'll be there physically for that.
All right, well, we'll be happy to see.
And Michael, I, uh, recognize that you did not sign up either, is that intentional or unintentional?
That was unintentional.
Uh-huh.
I, I do occasionally miss deadlines, that's why I work on the Z B A and I work with what's in front of me.
Well, what is the suggestion then, is that we have a write-in for Michael, and it won't take more, it will, if we all vote for Michael, he'll have to do it.
Yeah, I think there's only one person actually on the ballot and there's two slots open.
Yeah.
So we have a write-in campaign for Mike's team, everybody vote for Mike's team.
Right, or just X. So you can, you can put me in there if you want, um.
Are, is the ballot, are the ballots published yet?
Yeah, well, the signup time is over.
But the ballots have not been printed.
The ballots have not been printed, so we can't get his name on the ballot, because the signup time is over, but we can have a write-in campaign.
Right, no, I just was wondering who was, who was on the ballot.
And.
Well, I'm running for library trustee, so you can write, write me, you can vote for me.
Yeah, yeah, no, I saw that, I saw that on the list.
Yeah. She works for. She lives here, but she works. Uh, Rob knows her, says like she'll be a good fit. Who's this?
She is a new grant.
I don't, I don't remember her name, oh.
Somebody else.
We can ask Rob to tell us. I don't think anybody else is thinking about running, but will it be any other?
Like I said, you do a good job, you know the law of.
I try, sometimes I scare people off.
Well, your CPA candidate listed on the ballot is Tiffany Adams.
So, all right, I'm going to sign off.
Flashing so loud.
What's that?
I'm going to say goodnight to everybody.
Goodnight.
Goodnight.
Goodnight, Madeline. All right, we are adjourned till our next meeting. It is nine forty-seven. Eight.
Oh, it's eight forty-seven.
Eight forty-seven, nine forty-seven.
Make yourself a note, Rob, we need those minutes that Whitney redid.
Yeah, you have three strikes against.
Oh, really?
Yeah, DOT.
And that those little minutes that you relied, they were.
Oh, it's the second strike, okay.
It was a, it's his fault if he wasn't on that video.
Yeah.
He's responsible for looking at the map and saying, oh, look, there's a giant piece of property, who's that?
The state law is that the, the applicant is responsible, but he's got a point, choosing our tool. Why that didn't show I am, it always has a test, I have no idea why.
It never, anybody.
We know who goes.
While you were gone, we were talking about writing in Mike.
Oh, yes.
Madeline, uh, said her goodbyes, said she's, she feels like she's suspended.
Write in Mike. Did you stop this? Like, right, right, that's right.
We hear from the.
Write in Mike, cause he's always right.
Absolutely.
That's good. Write in Mike, cause he's always right.